Row, Kyle.
Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Here.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes, I'm here.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
You.
City Administrator James Fincher.
Here.
Thank you, Tina. Item three is approval of the minutes from the meeting on May the 9th, 2017. Do we have a motion to approve as written?
Motion to approve, second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion or any changes necessary? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. There's no proclamations, or Mike, do you have something?
I just want to mention Betty Ann Bullard and Kip Beulah, excuse me, they're fixing up their properties downtown and every time we get a chance to praise somebody for helping our downtown, I'd just like to recognize them. We'll try to get ahold of them and let them know how much we appreciate it and make a little difference, just to sum it up.
So they just updated that one building, right?
Well, they got their four lot row.
Well, that one building. Gotcha. I didn't think something else was there as well. Good deal.
Okay, item five, a report from City Administrator James Fincher.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to remind everyone of a special call meeting on June the 20th at 11:00 a.m. for the NUB resolution that was set. Probably y'all were having gone, but I think y'all, I think Mayor, got in contact with everybody, but just a reminder of that and also to help make a public notice of that. Secondly, along that same line, we are currently advertising for bids for the refurbishing of the Tanner Building and they, we have set a deadline of the 28th for those to come back. And in order to get in under the deadline on the state, we act, we need to have a, a call meeting after that in order to accept a bid. And so whatever would be y'all's pleasure on that, it would, since the deadline is the 28th and they're going to have, the architects are going to have a pre-bid meeting with any interested folks to put in a bid, any construction companies, it would have to be on the 29th or the 30th. And so whatever y'all's pleasure is on that. And any time of the day that works for you, it doesn't have to be the one for NU's at 11:00 a.m. If y'all want to do it during the day, it shouldn't take five minutes, 10 minutes. So that's up to y'all. Whatever y'all's pleasure is, we'll make it work. But you can think about that for a little bit, but tonight we do need to set that. We'll have to, this second, but before we leave tonight, we need to, we need to set The Bright Town speed monitor has come in that we had ordered and that Mr. Knight brought up and got approved. And so it has came, it has arrived and next week we're going to coordinate with the NU and try to get that installed up on Cosby Road near the old Bright Town restaurant there on the utility pole. Chief Shules is on vacation this week and he's in charge of that project. Was in contact with Jimmy Robertson today and told him I'd have Maurice get in contact with him Monday when he gets back from vacation and coordinate that. Last week, well, week before last now, we had our first Rhythm on the River in the Concert Series for the summer, so we all were there. I thought we had a big turnout, over 300 people, biggest crowd we've had so far. We've got another one this week. Hope the weather will cooperate, it's not looking real good right now, but just a reminder to everybody that if the weather holds and we can have it, we will have it. We can play in the rain, but oh. And that's all we've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, appointment of boards and commissions.
One thing to say.
Oh, I thought you had done city. Okay, go ahead.
Let's just take this a second. And I say this every week, but I'd like to thank the fire department, the street departments and the police departments, and I'd like to give a special recognition to the parks and recreation. We just got back from some meetings today and they were talking about, and I saw how important a parks and recreation is to town on what to do. I don't believe people realize as far as what our parks and recreation does, and I just wanted you to know, Tim, it made a big difference. We've got a lot of compliments about what you do up here too, so, on the table.
Counting the appointment of boards, item A is the appointment of the planning commission. Mansfield McMahon currently is on there and he's up for reappointment. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move we leave him on there.
Second.
Second. Got two seconds. Any other discussion or? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Item B and C, I make those appointments to the library board and Alvin Watts is stepping down in the library board in a letter of recommendation, requested that Pat Mason be put on in his place. And also Alderman Jeff Fancher, you're on there now, correct? So he's, he wants to stay on, so I've appointed both of those, but I would like for the board to approve my appointments, if we have a motion to approve those two appointments that I've made.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. Thank you, gentlemen. Item D, a consideration of appointment, the Economic Development Commission has, their board has recommended that Jeff Fancher continue to serve on that board. With their recommendation, Terry, what, that's a, that's their own board and they're just making that recommendation. We don't have to vote on that, do we?
Well, that's your appointment.
Your appointment.
Okay, that's my appointment as well.
And the only reason we're doing this, me sitting on it, is because of the timing that I went on, I went in three quarters of the way into the term and it's probably the solid fit to stay on if it's approval of these guys here.
Well, I'm putting you back on, but I still want the council to vote. I want them to be a part of the process. Do we have a motion to allow Alderman Jeff Fancher continue to serve on the EDC board?
Make a motion.
Got a motion, we got a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Item seven, a report from the Tanner Preservation Alliance.
We really don't have a lot to report today, guys. Think our city administrator, Mr. Fincher, has already covered most of what's going on with the Tanner Building. So I'll just announce that we still have our motorcycle ride coming up on the 24th of this month and we're actively working to make that a little bigger and better success to raise, raise some more money for the building. That is June 24th and anybody that has a bike or other kind of a vehicle they'd like to ride in, cars can go too, so we'd welcome anyone that'd like to go. We'll start at the Tanner Building, we'll ride over to Hot Springs, take a quick break, come back down, I think it's Highway 209, I believe, through Greenville and back down to 321, back to Brandywine for lunch. So, anyone, everyone is welcome.
Thank you, Terry. Item eight, under Old Business. Item A is the consideration of the second reading of ordinance 2017-07, and I'll let Terry read that.
Yes, Mayor, that's ordinance 2017-07, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2016-2017. Second reading.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve on the second reading?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Row call, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
No.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, go ahead and read that, Terry. That's the second reading for the Newport Grammar School.
Yes, Mayor, that's ordinance 2017-08, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2016-2017 for Newport Grammar School.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? Row call, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, item C, that's the second reading for the Newport Budget, City Newport Budget, Terry.
Yes, Mayor, and that's ordinance number 2017-09, an ordinance of the city of Newport, Tennessee, adopting the annual operating and capital budget for the city of Newport and the annual budget for the Newport Grammar School and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017 and ending June 30, 2018.
Thank you, Terry. Do we have a motion to approve the budget on the second reading?
I make a motion to approve.
So we got a second? Okay, we got a second. Any discussion? Row call, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
No.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Tina. Under New Business, item nine. Item A is consideration of the first reading ordinance 2017-11, amended the municipal code Title III Municipal Court, adding offender fee for paid violations.
Mayor, that's ordinance number 2017-11, an ordinance to amend the city of Newport Municipal Code Title III Municipal Court, Chapter 2 Court Administration, adding offender based fees per paid violation.
Do we have a motion to approve that on the first reading?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Row call, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, if you want to read that ordinance, Terry.
Mayor, that's ordinance 2017-12, an ordinance to amend the city of Newport Municipal Code Title 16 Streets and Sidewalks, et cetera, Chapter 1, miscellaneous replacing section 103 Heavy Truck Traffic prohibited on certain streets.
Do we have a motion to approve that on the first reading?
Mayor, if you'd like, well, this for the record, I'd like to talk a little bit about that. This is the culmination of a long process in which we've been trying to find a solution for the truck traffic downtown that keeps striking the Betty Ann Beulah property where the coffee shop is. We've had, we've met with the state on multiple occasions. We had an engineer come and look that we brought in on our own to try to find a solution. And there is a photograph behind this ordinance. This picture right here is a diagram that he did, looking at how we could reconfigure the intersection to try to make the trucks make a wider swing. But in the meeting that we, the mayor and Gary and others had with T-Dot in trying to find a solution for this problem, the only thing that we could come up with that can work, because the turn radius, if we reconfigure the interchange, and that's all we do, the computer program showed that the turn radius on the large trucks would still not allow them to make that turn without running up on the sidewalk, Newport hardware. The trucks have gotten so large now that towns our size simply cannot handle. And so what this does is it prohibits a right-hand turn at that intersection by trucks over a certain length, I forget off the top of my head. It's engineer, I think. The weight and the size and all that. But they'll have, if they're, we're going to make them have, the truck route will now be turning right on Main. It's a suggestion now. With this, that'll be the only way they can go to Bill West. If they go over to the next interchange and try to turn right, that will be in violation and we can write them a citation. This has been looked at, the staff has worked on this, it's been looked at by the city attorney, it's been looked at by the city judge, and everybody's in agreement. This was based on what's been done in other locations as far as restrictions downtown on truck routes. And so this is, this is kind of the only solution we had left to look at that'll actually work, is just to prohibit them from turning there. So that is what this is. This is, it's kind of a drastic solution, but it's the only solution available. The state agreed that that's, this is basically the only change, the only option we've got left.
Thank you. Norfolk Southern and the street department have been working on the holes at the railroad track, I got a call yesterday about it, and trying to make that work. It will be a smoother turn if they have to turn right there.
Now, the state is going to reconfig, do some reconfiguration. They're going to move back the stop bar on Main to where the trucks have more room to turn when they come off North Street. They're going to put new signage up, but they said that it would be August or September before they could do that. But we still, we have to do two readings on this and the second one will be in July, so it would be August. The state's going to work, that's not going to throw that out of whack too bad as far as the timeline goes. But this is, this is the solution that was come up with, with a collaboration of all the entities involved, that something, the only way to stop it is to prohibit. That's, that's really the only thing that's left to try. Another thing that came out of that meeting, we discussed the traffic lights on Broadway, that project, they said again that they will get through that with the funding, that hopefully this new 7 cent, or whatever the gas tax was that went into place should help with funding, there's a lot of projects in Cock County and in Newport that are approved but not funded, and hopefully this gas tax will move those projects along. The one thing that we did get a no-go on was to look at having a turn arrow at Brock's for those coming west into town from Newport. And they said they did an extensive study up there, did a traffic count, sat there, and they showed us the computer model, it's very impressive, the animation they had to show it, but they said that it was not warranted. There weren't enough vehicles, having to wait, and wait time was a minute and something on average, and they said that, that it just wasn't warranted. But they did do a study and reported back to us, so we did try to address that for folks that were complaining about it, but the state says it's not warranted. Thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have a motion to approve item B on the first reading?
So moved.
Got a second. Any discussion? Row call, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you. Item C, Design Review Board, Gary Carver.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Gentlemen, tonight I want to bring up a topic and I want us to discuss it and then we'll come back, if it is your pleasure, we'll come back next month with the proper ordinance to create this. I ran this by the Planning Commission. They are willing to serve as this board the same way they serve as the Board of Zoning and Appeals, but of course it would be your decision to create it. The Design Review Board Commission, what is it, what do we have it on there as? Design Review Board? The Design Review Board would come up with a set of regulations as far as facade and physical appearance was concerned of new construction and renovation in a certain area, which is going to be our C1, our downtown. We don't want to be non-residential. It would be for citywide, but the intent would be, when you create it, it's for citywide jurisdiction, but you, the intent would be to only make it downtown so that we could prevent a property owner from putting up a metal building or something, something cheap and something quick to get something open, when that's fine in a, in any other part of the city, but I feel like it is the, it, I think that the board sort of wants it to be the policy that anything downtown needs to adhere to a certain standard as far as design and as far as aesthetics goes. So, again, I just want you guys, if you've got questions, if we want to talk about it, but if it's, if it is your pleasure to do it, then I'll approach the Planning Commission and they'll officially recommend that we create one and then we'll have the proper ordinance next month to present.
Thank you, good idea.
I do too.
And keeping up with what's going on.
The, if someone was denied a building permit because their facade didn't meet what the Design Review Commission chose to make their standard, then the city council will be set up as the appeals board to that, the same way now if they get turned down at, at a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, if they're denied, they can appeal to you, it'd be the same, same concept. But, and they all agree that they didn't want to make it so heavy-handed and everything look exactly the same, but at the same time, I think the example we used was a Pals, everybody wants a Pals in Newport, but at the same time, with the, with the blue building with the hot dog and the french fries on it, that would downtown be the best place for that. They want to be on Cosby Highway anyway, so I don't think that'd be an issue.
Y'all okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I will, at this month's Planning Commission, I will make certain that they are, that they vote to recommend it and then I'll appear next month with the actual.
Before Gary sits down, you know, four of the aldermen, Mr. Gribble wasn't able to attend, but we just got back from the Tennessee Municipal League meetings and the work he does within the people from one end of the state, very commendable. And I just want to tell you publicly, I watched you work and has his nose in the ground, stuck to the ground. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Fincher.
Very professional.
Did a good job, and several people bragging on you down there too, along with our finance director and stuff, I want her to know that.
We got them full, Tina, we got to keep it up. All right, I'll, I'll take care of this, I'll be back next month with the, so we can vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Item D, Jeff Fancher, animal.
Animal shelter. Imagine that.
I mean.
Just to catch you up to speed as far as the numbers go, hate to keep the old scorecard. I used to thought this was some of the most irrelevant stuff we had in our package each month, but once again, the numbers speak for themselves. 89 animals came from the county last month, month of May, and 18 came from the city. I'll let you all do the math on that. Two weeks ago, I guess it was, me, Mr. Gribble, and Gary Carver and James, we met with the Cock County Mayor, Chris Lottinger, and I think there was two or three commissioners there, wasn't there, Roger?
Yes, sir.
Two or three, along with the county mayor, Carter Moore, and along with the representatives from the Friends of the Animal Shelter who had, who had a proposal that was presented to us, or it was actually a discussion between Fort City and County, and I would say, for lack of better terms, April Clevenger was the moderator of that. So I know us being out there, that the county met last night, I don't know what their findings were, so I have a call in Carter Moore, supposed to be calling sometime in the morning, or Chris Lottinger, to see what actually they did last night at their, at their county commission meeting. And I also, we'll wait to hear from them, and also I was told just a few minutes ago, also in a text message, that there was not, so, yeah. So, kind of, my meeting tomorrow will probably be irrelevant, but.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
There wasn't a quorum.
Oh, okay. So they didn't vote?
That was, that was a finance meeting, wasn't it? It wasn't a CLB meeting.
Well, it's to talk about funding before this, but, but I, you know, I wanted to meet with James and the Chris Lottinger and the commissioners, but we felt that sunshine law would be violated there. So we're going to suggest that Terry, you and Carter Moore get together and discuss some of the parameters of what, pardon me, of what the county's thinking and, you know, and what we're thinking as well.
I had a discussion with him last week, he's on vacation this week, won't be back until the weekend.
So we're basically sitting back waiting for what the county is going to do and, pardon me, sorry. And also to add to that, I had a meeting along with Coach Profit, members of the MTA this week, last four days. And we're not the only municipality that's dealing with issues of animal shelters from one end of the state to the other. And MTA issued us a formula that is equal based on population and gross population for cities and counties. Now, you know, that was, that was a good formula, but then again, we got to have a willing participant across the railroad tracks to make this thing work. So we're going to have to wait to see what the county does, in my opinion, and also to let know, there's some vicious rumor out there that all dogs are going to be euthanized at the animal shelter on the 16th, where some of you folks get this information at, I'll never know.
Please say it often.
But also, also, that's not going to happen. All animals will not be, as far as over my body, there will be no animals unless they're sick, to use a phrase that was used in the last meeting, there will be no animals euthanized as far as I'm concerned. So that's, that's a falsehood and straight from the depths, but that's my input on the animal shelter.
Thank you, Jeff. Item A, discussion of renovation of buildings for sale.
Yes.
Roger Gribble.
I've gotten a lot of questions, and I'm concerned myself with, I've got two different crews, one from Park and Rec and one from the street department, working in those buildings, and I know they were cleaned out by the people that do the cleaning on roadside, the convicts, and, but I'd just like to know what we're doing and how much money we've invested in that and where the money's coming from. We haven't appropriated money. I've heard everything that it's going to be a pet store to a dog pound, and it's not zoned correctly for a dog pound and zoned for a pet store, but I'd just like to know, you know, well, one, where's the money coming from? And two, do we have a plan for that or is somebody buying it and we're doing renovation on it, or what are we doing down there?
Well, what we're doing down there is, I think pretty much since it's been in the paper and everywhere else, that everybody should be firing the wire. We're looking for a temporary solution to our animal control issue since we're having to vacate the animal shelter by July 1. The jail inmates were down there moving items, they didn't do any renovations to the building.
And so they did.
They removed items that Keaton Cock County Beautiful had down there because the room, the building was full of Keaton Cock County Beautiful's supplies. And they took those out and they moved them down the street to the other building we owned down there. We allowed them to do that. As far as money, we have spent as of today around $5,800 down there. That money is coming from the building repair money out of city hall's budget. I checked with the auditors to make sure that was appropriate use of that money, they felt like it was. As far as being zoned against a animal control facility, it was my understanding, you talked to Mr. Robinson about that, and he explained to you that that was not the case, that it is not zoned against them.
Well, he didn't say that. He said you had decided that you could put it under as a pet store, and is what he explained to me.
He didn't tell me, he told me.
Well, that's my conversation. He and I had him play it for you, I don't, you know, I don't know why, but.
Well, if you had checked with me, I could explain anything to you. If you'd asked me any of the questions, I'd have been glad to explain anything to you.
Well, he's had his own, and I thought I put a call into him.
Well, and he checked with the state planner and the state planner said there's nothing that restricts against the use of that facility in downtown.
As a dog pound.
Whatever you want to call it.
Well, I'm not calling anything, I don't know what it is.
Well, it's an animal control facility, if you want to call it a dog pound, that'll work.
Well, animal.
Well, an animal control facility.
I think the city got...
It goes, can you put one of those under C1?
I think the city got backed up in a corner.
Well, that's the state planner's opinion.
What?
It's not my opinion, that's based on an expert.
Well, I think the state planner missed it, that's his opinion.
I guess that's yours.
Pardon?
The state planner missed it.
That's right, that's correct.
Well, it come, the whole thing is narrowed down, though, it sort of got caught in the bind, had to do something, you can't wait a long time to do it, and to my knowledge, this thing is just temporary, we can get something else set up, but you had no other choice, or I don't know of any other choice, everybody's got all these solutions, I'd like to know what they are, what are you going to do, you have to do something with animals now, you can't wait another month or two before you decide, you've been having to work on this already, and I think that you had to do maybe what you had to do.
We had, we had a month, and I think the Friends of the Animal Shelter asked on separate occasions to, if we'd meet with them and see if we could negotiate some type of solution. I don't know that we've ever met with them, other than the meeting, they had... I had a communication with Ms. Anne Fontaine yesterday, correct, Ms. Fontaine, and told her, well, same thing I reiterated here just a minute ago, that I'm waiting on the county to make the first move, because that's basically the level playing field we want, I have heard, we haven't heard, and I told her first time, first thing I heard, something from county, I'd let her know, correct, Ms. Fontaine?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 10, item A, consideration of bids for police records and court system for the city in Newport.
Mr. Finch, was this all that's been worked out and everything?
Yes, well, Mr. Garal's here.
Okay, I wonder who's going to speak.
To speak on behalf of the police department and also Rocky, as I think, they went through a lengthy process of evaluating, they've traveled to many other jurisdictions, looking at the records management systems they have, and they, they put hours and hours of research into this. Now, just to, just to clarify, this is a two-part bid, the police records management system is also going to tie into the court records management system, and so whichever bid you take for the, the police records management, then you have to take the correlating one for the court records management, because they're together, even though they're two different things. And just for the record, the, the fee that you passed earlier will fund the court version, that's what that was for, that was a, an option that we had, was to let a, a court fee fund this, so that the taxpayers didn't have to, and that's the court side, not the police side. Do you have any questions for them about what it does, or...
Is there anything y'all think you need to tell us?
We spent endless hours, Chief Schultz, Deputy Chief, Rocky, myself, looking into different systems, such as James said, and we're not here to ask for money, that money's done, it's in the budget, we're just, we're just a system that we like and we were going to propose that.
We, we got four bids that were turned in, looked at all four, went to Hamelton Sheriff's Department, looked at one, had others come to be in-house demos, the court version that goes with that, Tiffany looked at, she's real happy with it, so, the one we chose to go with, there's no hardware to install, it's all just web-based, nothing to back up, no extra equipment to purchase, so, we like that, we like the fact that this company also works with our 911 software, so that can sort of import the data from a call straight into it, to make the arrests and incidents go quicker, where they don't have to keep re-entering information, so, you know, goes from 911 to us, to the court, all just flowing to where they don't have to retype information.
Do we have a motion to approve the bid?
Was that the lowest bid, Rocky?
Well, you have two different options, a lot of these software companies want you to purchase their software, and then they want you to purchase hardware that you keep in-house, so, we chose not to do one like that, we chose one that's just a subscription-based, so, it was the lowest first-year cost, and then it was the second-lowest recurring cost.
Y'all seen, you said you needed something comparable with the rest of your stuff, two bids, I think.
Well, you could go with one that did the court and the records management, but it didn't work with 911, so, we chose the one that did, so, all three pieces work together now, and it was the only one that did that.
Rocky, is it a, is it a user-friendly system?
We actually, even if it wasn't one that worked with 911, it was the one we would have chose anyway, because it was the most user-friendly, it's a brand-new piece of software, they have it in other states, but in Tennessee, we're going to be one of the first ones to use it in Tennessee, they're going from the old style, like I said, that requires hardware, to this one being totally web-based, so, it's a modern, you know, just internet interface, you can use any web browser, and, like I said, Chief Schultz, Deputy Chief Hudson, even our Tiber's person, Susan Ball, she, she likes it, she approved, you know, that if we went with this one, she'd be happy with it, so...
This one was very, probably the most user-friendly out of all of them to navigate on, so...
Everyone that'll be using the system said that it was their favorite of the four.
Is it just a records management system where you have multiple data interfaces?
Well, since it's web-based, there's no software to install, and we do have access cards in the car, so, it's just a website, so, yeah, they can use it in the car.
But will they, will they be able to receive their calls and information?
It's not necessarily a full CAD, it's more when 911 puts it in the system, and there's an arrest or something from that call, they can just grab the information and it already be in their report, they don't have to retype it. And based on that information, you can do a lot more stats, where a lot of our ladies up front spend hours every month doing stats for you all in the books and things, this system will just, you know, just do those stats instantly, so, that's, you know, another advantage to it.
Rocky, for the record, which one did you all recommend?
It's a company out of Tullahoma, Tennessee, they're called Age Ascent Technologies, and we've talked to their representative, he, he's former law enforcement, he's been chief in, you know, various cities, and he's a great guy and everything, and, like I said, we're, we're real pleased with, with what they've got to offer, and they're, like I said, they're a Tennessee company out of Tullahoma, so...
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the bid.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roca.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you. Glenn Ray still here?
Yes.
Glenn, I just, was going to share this letter, you received it, too, from the mayor of Jackson, Tennessee, in support of what Newport Utilities has done on the broadband, just for, for the record.
And also for the record, there was a big discussion at TML from people, especially in our area, that Newport was getting involved with broadband, nothing positive comments from off the bottom, I believe.
Talking about how important it was to their cities and their counties and stuff, and how our county's going to be, you know, one of the first to have it, and one of the people said it'd help them recruit seventeen more places because they had the broadband already in place.
Don't forget the call meeting, Mr. Finch.
Yes.
What day will be convenient with you, Mr. Ray, on the call meeting?
We're talking about the call meeting for the...
We're talking about for the Tanner Building.
I'll, I'll do the citizens' comments in a minute.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the...
Thursday or Friday, the twenty-ninth or thirtieth. It's a Friday. What time is it?
I can do any one. They won't take long, y'all want to come during the day like you're doing, the NU one, I mean, it's, that's just whatever's convenient.
No, this is the, the call meeting.
For the bids, for the bids on the...
The bids on the Tanner Building.
But it won't take, I'm just saying, it shouldn't take.
Let's put a date down.
Thursday, eleven o'clock.
Okay, I can't be here at, well, my wife's got two dogs, eleven, ten, two o'clock. But is Friday okay with everybody?
Yeah. Can we just do a polling on that? I mean, do we have to meet?
Yeah, we have to.
We have to meet, okay.
And this has to be the majority here.
Yes, we just have to have four.
I can't be there.
Can you meet on Thursday?
No, sir. Leaving on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
For NCAA.
Four of you can be here?
Be here.
Okay, so, you want it Thursday or Friday, which one?
Whatever's best for them.
Either one's fine, we can be here both days.
Friday at eleven?
The thirtieth.
The thirtieth.
Thank you.
Call meeting. Mark, I just need to, I've got a question I've got to ask you about a property owner when the meeting's over. Okay, the floor's open for citizens' comments, if you are going to comment, step to the podium and state your name, and there's a five-minute limit.
Hello, my name is Anne Fontaine, I'm vice president of the Friends of the Animal Shelter. I'm here to help our, try to save our reputation, we, there's been rumors, for one thing, saying that we were evicting the shelter on July first, in reality, we were told in April by James Fincham that you were, that the city was going to negate the lease that we had with them, the lease is supposed to be in effect until two thousand and eleven, no, two thousand and twenty-one, excuse me, and, so, we went to our lawyer to see whether indeed we could enforce the lease, he told us, no, that there was a clause that the city could get out of, however, he said, we would have to have a new lease if we were going to permit to have animals in the shelter, for our own safety, so that in case we would be sued or whatever, we'd have to have another lease, so, we had the lawyer send the letter, and all of you Aldermen, I believe, received one, hopefully, and James Fincham received it, so, it was not that we were evicting you from the, from the shelter, it was that we were requiring another lease for our safety if you were to stay, now, we never got an answer about that, nobody addressed us as to, as to having a new lease, so, that's, that's the first thing. Secondly, the effort to ruin the reputation of the wonderful people who have worked so diligently for the last twenty years to see that we have a, an animal shelter to protect these animals, to say that we stole seventy-five thousand dollars makes me furious, I would like to see the, the proof from the bookkeeping, where we stole seventy-five thousand dollars, I, I could have you see the books that our good treasurer keeps, perfect books that show every dollar that comes in and every dollar that comes out, and we certainly wish we had seventy-five thousand dollars now, because we're going to have to put ten thousand dollars into a roof, and probably at least another ten thousand dollars into replacing the ceilings in the shelter because of mold damage. I, I think that we deserve a very sincere and a very public apology for these accusations against us, and I think this might be a good time to start. Would you like to say anything, Mr. Fincham?
Well, I haven't accused you of stealing anything, so, I don't know where you're putting that to me, the only thing I've talked about is that the meeting we had here, and I didn't tell you we were breaking the lease, but that was done over a year ago, what I told you all was that in the coming budget, we were scaling back to the original one building, and we were shutting down the Brandon building, that's what I told you, and as far as, I've never said any money was stolen from anybody, but what I have said is that all the monies that had come in from, through the rolling rescue were not turned into the city, I have said that, but I've never accused anybody of stealing, to say that would be that it's gone, it's missing, I don't, I've never said it's missing, all I've said is, we didn't get it, that's what I said, I've never said, they stole the money, I've never said that to anyone.
That's a strange...
And I challenge you to find anybody that'll say, I told them.
That's a strange thing, that how did this word get out, that, that...
How does the word get out that we're doing all these things we're not doing? If you can, if you can figure that out, you're smarter than I am, because we've been accused everything under the sun, I've been misquoted left and right, just like right now, over things that I absolutely did not say, when we had our meeting in here with you all, when Tina and I met with you, one of your officers sat there and argued that we had never met with you all before, and even you all had to correct her in saying, yes, they have met with us before, and then she said, well, not this year.
Well, we met with you...
And so, I mean, you tell me how misstatements get out there, I don't know the answer to that.
We met with you on April...
Some people get confused, and some people do it intentionally.
We met with you on April eleventh, and on that day, you said that you were breaking the lease.
We broke the lease a year ago.
All right, then, so, you got the letter saying that another lease had to be made in order for you to stay in the animal shelter, so, why weren't you talking about that?
I talked to four of the Aldermen, and I told them about the letter, and I discussed with them what our options were, and that if we did not, the way I saw it, meet y'all's demands, then we had to be out by July one, and so, they said to start making plans to be out by July one, that's what the letter says.
And the letter also said if...
Last one I began, I told them what my option was, we had the building downtown that I could rehab.
Okay, time's up.
That's what I was saying.
Any other comments from citizens?
I wanted to try to invite you all to four things that are happening in Parks and Recreation.
We're having some technical difficulties here.
You got to get, got to get Rocky involved there, the IT man. I want to personally invite you guys to the, to this week, Thursday night, we have starting our Kiwanis Fireflies Flicks, Trey and I talked about it early, and Thursday night, we'll be showing Malana. Friday and Saturday is the local car show, the Moonshine Rod Run, and that will be Friday and Saturday, then Monday, we start the intermediate eleven, twelve, and thirteen-year-old district tournament at the big league at the City Park, then in the following week, our city attorney again takes his all-star team to compete in the nine and ten-year-old district, which is held at the City Park, too, so, these are some things that are happening right here in your back door, and we'd love to see you pop in and say hi to us and, and enjoy, enjoy what we're doing in Parks and Recreation, thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
I would like to say, I got to brag on Tim and his staff, they do an excellent job at the park, the kids, they're, they're well taken care of, they do everything to ensure their safety and make sure they have a good time, and I personally appreciate it.
Any other comments from citizens?
Let me kiss my brother, I've come before the civil service, the city...
Restate your name, please.
Lori Keller, and I work at Malory Furniture.
Okay.
And I was told that I needed to come here to this meeting to appeal, what I'm trying to do is, I work at the HR and accounting at Malory, we're a furniture company right down the road, we've been there since two thousand and five, and I were a few years, three years behind on our personal property taxes, and two thousand and fifteen was a bad year for us, it was really hard, but, we're doing better, we're a small business, we're thriving now, and, sorry.
It's all right.
But, we'd like to, we're at the position now that we want to get caught up, and we want to get our taxes paid, but, we're still recouping at the same time, and I've got a worksheet, if, I may give y'all a copy, so y'all can see what I'm fixing to ask you for.
Thank you.
I've got it broken down for you, in city, I've got it broken down for court costs, attorney fees, and interest, as well as what the actual tax is, and what I'm asking is if we could possibly get... what I'm asking is if we could, um, possibly get the court costs, attorney fees, and interest waived, so that we can get caught up, we're prepared to pay the whole taxes, the actual taxes for 2014, 15, and 16, but we're, um, at the same time, we're, like I said, it was a bad year for us for 2015, and so, you know, I was having to call vendors and ask them to, you know, kind of give us some grace period on getting things paid and stuff, so we're, we're back on our feet and stuff, but trying to get a little help so we don't wipe out everything, trying to get caught up on this, and I would just like to ask if there was any way that we could find pardon on these extra fees, which for the city it would be 24, 29, 31, I didn't have that broken down, um, but if you would go down to the bottom of the city, you can see what the total in interest, um, and attorney fees and court costs would be, and the city part would be 24, 29, 31, and that's what I'm asking if, if y'all would consider waiving and, uh, pardoning us on those fees, so we could get our...
Hey, I'm telling you where you're, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, you're located where?
We are, um, at Belori Furniture, right here, um, we're actually down below the fire department, in between Feed My Sheep and Hilltop.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
And, um, I took this for myself to do this, uh, it's a company I've worked for six years, and I like my job, I like what I do, I like being, um, a part of this community, and I just, they said this is one, the only way to get it, to see if it can be...
Terry, can you...
Well, you're, you're my suggestion, ma'am, since this isn't on the agenda, I would suggest that we, uh, consider this at the next meeting, I don't think that nothing's going to be done to you in the next 30 days, for sure, and, uh, maybe I'll talk to Mr. Jeff Green, who is our tax collector for, for delinquent taxes, and maybe he could come and advise you all what he thinks can and cannot be done, some of these things, uh, of course, if it's in court, the court has to waive it, I think we can make a recommendation, though, uh, and, uh, if you could maybe come back and maybe...
How many folks do y'all employ down there?
Right now, we're at seven, 16.
16.
You know what we have to be careful about, somebody else brought one up a while back, and, uh, everybody's got different things, I want to help you more than anybody.
I understand that.
I want you here, like here, anything we can do for our community here is great, I just got to figure out, like what Terry says, you need to, need to make sure we're legal about what we can do or can't do.
I, I...
You know, but other can of worms either.
I totally understand that, and I don't know if this has happened before anything, I did talk to Jeff Green, and also, um, one of the clerks at the office, and, and this is the direction, that's why I'm here, is because, you know, they couldn't do anything that has, that has to come from...
We'll get it on the agenda.
We'll have it on the agenda, and we'll, we'll tell the board what they, what they can do.
Okay, great.
And, and it'll be their pleasure, of course.
Okay, great.
Second Tuesday of next month.
Yes.
Second Tuesday.
Of July.
Thank you for investing.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I was...
You're okay.
And I'm hungry, so that's...
Thank you.
Anyone else? Can you come to the mic?
It's just a question, is there a regulation, an ordinance regulating merchants downtown putting their stuff out on the sidewalks?
That problem's been addressed, I think I know what you're talking about.
They're moving, they're, they're in the process of...
Yeah, yeah, that's...
It's been addressed about a month ago.
Yeah, it's, it's in process. Okay, someone else raised their hand? Yes.
My name's Linda White, I'm sure you all know who I am, and I've got a question, but if I may, may I give my five minutes to Ms. Anne, so that she can finish what she's had to say without being interrupted by Mr. Fancham? May I give my five minutes to her?
Well, she asked him the question.
Well, he went on and on and on, but she wasn't finished, may she finish?
Yeah, yeah, she can, she can have your five minutes.
Thank you.
Well, in addition, I would like to say that we have had many meetings about this, and we have decided amongst ourselves that the only thing we can do to keep this shelter the same as it is, if we do get a donation of $100,000 from the city and $100,000 from the county. Now, if either one, uh, remakes, we can't do it, there's no way that our smart, small group can fund a shelter for a year for less than 200, less than $300,000, truly, even if we have a lot of volunteer help and all, so, this, this is just, just crucial, however, we've got other plans, too, we're thinking, if this doesn't work, we can open a, a, more of a no-kill type shelter, one that we're just using the one main building, and we can, uh, just take surrendered animals, only ones that are very adoptable, and, uh, we, we can have a, a, a shelter similar to pets without partners, we've gone and talked to those people, they have very little help from the city and county, uh, and, uh, they're able to do it, and they have a thrift shop, and they have different fundraisers, and we think we can do that, too, but there's no way we can do that, if you folks don't agree to the $100,000, and, I mean, and, and then we, we can't, doesn't matter what the county does, it has to come from both of you, because there's no way we can do it otherwise.
We've been leading the pack since for the last 15, 18 years, so it's all across the street, the railroad tracks, ma'am.
I know, I know.
Or the level plan, now even if we went 50/50, that's still not a level playing field.
We know that.
I think, speaking for myself, I'd settle for that, and we, we could roll, but if we get some cooperation across the street, I think, well, I'll try to make this thing work.
Well, you know, we, we never did have, uh, an agreement with the county, the county had an agreement with you folks.
That's unfortunate as well.
Uh, we, we only had, uh, the agreement with the city.
People in the city pay county taxes, too, that's why they've got a problem a lot of times, county and local, we pay both taxes, but...
Well, they have their argument, too, about the prison or something, and...
The jail's funded by the state.
We can't do anything about that, all we know is that what we have to do in order to keep this animal shelter going, and I don't see any way in the world, I don't care what anybody says, that if you have that, that building downtown, that you are going to avoid euthanizing a whole lot of animals, and that's what we really care about. Is there anything you folks would like to ask me?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate what y'all have done.
Any other comments from citizens? Who have a motion to adjourn?
You can move them there.
Who have a second?
Second.
Row call.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes.
Tina, adjourned.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet?
Yes.
Thank you, Tina, this meeting's adjourned. Mark, don't forget...